Right, we'll call to order the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, January 23rd. The first item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Araza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Chanzet.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Seron.
Here.
Vocal singer.
Here.
That's 13.
Thank you. Item number two is a reminder to speak directly into the microphone. If you come up to the podium to speak tonight, just adjust the microphone to whatever height's comfortable for you so we can make sure that everybody can hear it. Item number three is approval of the minutes for January 3rd, 2024, special meeting and January 9th, 2024. Comments on those? How could I get a motion?
Moved.
Motion by Uer, second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number four is items to be removed or changed. Is there anything tonight?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item number five, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything for anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we'll move right on agenda. Abby?
Consent agenda reads as follows. Ordinance 2024-10, I'm sorry, ordinance 2024-009, surplus of a vehicle. Ordinance 2024-10, donation of equipment to chip in. Resolution 2024-8-R, approving the City of Batavia strategic plan for 2024 through 2028. Resolution 2024-11-R, approving a master services agreement with Fairgram Engineering and Environmental. Resolution 2024-12-R, approving TO number one with Fairgram for Public Works Yard improvements, drying bed and exterior storage, and final engineering design services. Resolution 2024-10-R, approval of a telecommunications franchise agreement with Unity Dark Fiber. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion by Beck, second by Uer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we will move on to item number seven, which is the Batavia Square Development. We'll start off with ordinance 2024-003, amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map for general commercial mixed use.
Thanks all. I'll probably be just discussing all of these kind of together, but there are five ordinances and one resolution before you tonight related to this application. This is the Batavia Square Development proposal, which would be the former Sam's Club site at 501 North Randall Road. The applicant is looking to divide the property into two uses and the building into two uses. One would be for Tesla Motor Dealer, that would be about approximately 45,000 square foot. And then the balance of the site, which would be 83,000 square foot of the footprint of the building and about 130,000 square foot of total when the adding a second floor would be self-storage at the rear of that building. The Plan Commission did review or hold a public hearing on December 6th, and the discussion did continue to January 10th regarding this proposal. They did recommend approval of each of the actions with conditions that were also in the ordinance tonight before you. The actions are essentially first, the ordinance 2403, which would amend the comprehensive land use map to designate the property on the comprehensive plan from general commercial to mixed use. Ordinance 2404 would rezone or reclassify the property from GC to mixed use. It would also add a planned development and amend and underline planned development that previously existed on the property with the original Sam's Club approval in 1998. There are some modifications to the zoning code coupled with that with the planned development. It's to modify an existing floor area ratio. Today's code does not really use the floor area ratio in either of these two districts, but it is an amendment nonetheless. There are some amendments related to the mixed use district because specifically there are some requirements regarding windows and door entries and some other design requirements that are designed more for new sites rather than the existing situation that we're dealing with here. As well as there are some addressing parking lot conditions, specifically the number of spaces that are necessary for the dealership. Our zoning code only looks at the number of parking spaces, but not the fact that some of this would be for inventory here. The next ordinance that is 2405, that would amend the text of the zoning code for the mixed use district to allow both personal property storage and motor vehicle sales in that district subject to conditions or some requirements that are within that section that will be added to the code in that section. And then among the ordinances, ordinances 06 and 07 would grant conditional uses for the two proposed uses. And then resolution 2409 would approve the platist subdivision for the property. As I mentioned, the Plan Commission did review this across two means. The applicant did discuss several existing covenants on the property that limit the retail use on the property. And the applicants did go over the need for self-storage in the area. And both the representatives from Tesla and the vehicle developer noted the benefit of sharing this proposed, their proposed use with the storage uses. The commission overall was in favor of the proposed use or felt as appropriate. And they did at their January 10th meeting, review conditions of approval. There were some modifications made on that. And as I mentioned in the staff report, we have subsequently updated some of those based on their discussion and discussion with the applicant. One of the items we did add is a condition to these ordinances that would make it, the approvals contingent on the applicant closing on the property. We have done that with some more recent developments in the past few years. So the Plan Commission did recommend design review approval by a seven to zero vote contingent on the approval of the actions that would be before you tonight. And they did recommend approval seven to zero for those actions. And then just really briefly, the staff has been working with the applicant. One item was discussion of a maintenance agreement with the applicant. We're still working through those requirements and that language. And this would be basically for snow plowing the existing private street that's in front of the site. We have been discussing them with a proposed backup special service area, which they do disagree with and have requested the removal of that from that agreement. And so we're still working with them on that aspect. There are a couple of modifications that they've requested or that would need amendment regarding the maintenance agreement. We would need to modify that language in 2404 and perhaps resolution 0902 to address that particular agreement still. We do with the consideration of the no longer dedicating the street in front of us, private street, we would need to make a modification or add a modification to the planned development regarding the second tower sign on the site. When the road was going to be dedicated, that was allowed by code. Now it would require a modification under the planned development. Essentially, if a modification was not granted, the proposed 18-foot sign would have to be six-foot feet height rather than 18 and 80 square feet or 60 square feet instead of 80 square feet. There would also, the applicant has requested modification of condition two to stipulate that it would be for the affidavit verifying that there is a lease in place for Tesla. And then modification of items 2406, the applicant has requested a condition that does specify that would be applicable to successors of the signs. The applicant is here tonight, and they are prepared to give a presentation too.
Do you have any questions for Drew at this point?
Why was mixed use zoning chosen as the template on which to build this as opposed to a different zoning framework? Seems to not really fit at all within the purpose of a mixed use district, mainly because it's not a mixed use at all.
Well, so the suggestion of going with mixed use was in order to make sure that with the personal property storage in particular, there was a concern from staff's perspective about the proliferation of that on Randall Road in the general commercial district. No matter how many conditions we may have added, that there would be potentially a push either through a variance or through other processes to seek approval for what would be a conditional use if it was otherwise placed in the general commercial district. We felt that that would be the most limiting way to have control over that rather than allowing a self-storage use to be conditional use or permitted use in the general commercial district to certain stipulations. So that was where that was recommended. It would be mixed use in that there are basically two different types of uses on the site. The other benefit is the mixed use district does recognize zero lot, lot line, which the applicant is asking for in this case because the division of the property would be at the common firewall in the building. So that is one aspect that the mixed use district does allow or does address, whereas the general commercial does not. So that was one consideration as well.
Drew, just to clarify that, we have very few mixed use districts in City of Batavia. Isn't that right? One way to be so limiting.
So there are essentially, I believe it's about four locations that we have presently zoned with the MU mixed use district. Those include Campana, the former Siemens or Furnace site, and then the only location that we have a building currently with it is the Landings on Fabian Parkway.
I only worry this might either dilute its use as a purpose of its use or perhaps lead to it not being used in the future if there might be another site location where development wants to use mixed use that would open it up to similar uses as today, even though I know there are some restrictions in place to try to prevent the proliferation of sorts of uses that we're discussing tonight.
I think that's what Drew was getting at before, that if we were to make it say general commercial, we've got a lot of general commercial properties and it would end up opening up this use to a lot more properties that are general commercial versus if you apply this text amendment to just the mixed use, it only applies to very few properties within Batavia. So we're trying to, but that's under city council's control whether they choose to expand mixed use to apply to other properties. So it would be within your control versus right now, properties, if we were to change general commercial, any of those properties would be able to do this by right.
I guess I worry that this could be a poison pill for expanding mixed use because now we have to keep in our back of our mind, we're opening this up to these uses now. So is it really even mixed use anymore or is it just kind of this warped commercial district? That was not strictly anything, but I just almost feel like I'm surprised we don't have a new category entirely, but I understand that could also have some legal ramifications.
Right, yeah. To address that point, we would have to then create the standards for that district. There's probably more to it than necessarily meets the eye on that aspect. And while I did say you could have some stipulations in the general commercial district, that was kind of the original thought with this proposal before we approached the mixed use conversation. But the ordinance 2405 did include some basically standards for those uses. So in a mixed use situation, if somebody was looking to place them, it basically limits self-storage to certain sizes or a minimum size that has to be indoor climate controlled, that it shares part of the floor footprint with another use. And there's basically entertainment and recreation, an eating jerking establishment, retail, or an auto dealership. And that basically, the other limiting condition was the item E, which is a stipulation that the indoor property storage would have to be at least 650 feet from a regional arterial. So it's because of the frontage, they do meet that. But going forward in those other locations, that would be one limiting factor as well. It still would present some opportunities, but we believe it would be very limited based on those parameters.
Plow the road right now? Who plows that road right now?
Oh, okay. So right now, because of our need to plow the bridge to the north, it's been past practice, I believe, since the development, the original development was done, that the city does plow that roadway from Mill Street up to Hawks Drive.
So in that case, like with the, do we take care of like all the entrances then to the businesses or the businesses taking care of their own entrances?
Gary's shaking his head.
We just plow it because it doesn't make sense for us to lift our plows up and 100 feet later drive our plows back down. We just plow from point A to point B.
The applicant wants to come up now?
My name is Chris Cosentino. I'm the attorney who's working with the developer of the site. I'm just going to say a very brief few words that I'm going to open it up to questions and I'm going to tag in my partner in crime, Linda Cost, who is the Realtor involved in the plan. She's got a lot more answers and she's going to want to go through some of the slides. That's going to, I think, give some color to what we're trying to do here and give you an idea of what the artist renditions are, what the space will look like once it's all said and done. I want to thank at the outset staff, in particular Scott, Drew, and Zach. I want to thank the Planning Commission. We were in front of the Planning Commission, I think, twice. They asked a lot of questions, which were good questions. They had a lot of good feedback. I think we got a unanimous upvote from the Planning Commission because I think they understood after we made our presentation to them just how this is going to fit in the City of Batavia. We understand the concerns that generally there are with respect to self-storage. And to assuage those concerns, I think we have met the questions with the bare fact that this is a very unique space. And it's a space that cannot hold one usage, one usage that would be feasible with the restrictive covenants that are in place from Walmart. Those Walmart restrictive covenants are going to be in place for another nearly 22 years, and they restrict any type of retail commercial use going in. So if you think about it, what type of a store could go into a space that size? Maybe a Costco, maybe a Meyer, something along those lines. They're all prohibited, every single one of them. Tesla sees this as an opportunity to make inroads into the Tesla sees this as an opportunity to make inroads into this area. They want to get in here. There's not a dealership out this far west. This is the perfect space, but it can't take the entire footprint of the building. It can swallow up, as Drew indicated, about 45,000 square feet. It needs a neighbor and the only neighbor that works for Tesla, and we've got a representative from Tesla here to attest to this, if you'd like to hear from her, the only neighbor that they've been able to identify is self-storage. Why self-storage? Well, very little traffic, very little noise, very little disruption to the business model that Tesla wants to foster, okay? There's, there's not a lot of people coming and going to a self-storage facility. The hours are limited and this self-storage facility just, so we're talking apples-to-apples comparisons here. This is not the self-storage facility that you might see in an industrial park. This is going to be a self-storage facility that is state-of-the-art, it's climate-controlled, it's entirely indoors, it's going to have a drive-in feature for people who want to unload and load their items. The City of Batavia has one self-storage facility within the city limits. I believe it's on the east side off of Kirk Road. This is something that's actually going to benefit the community. Now, nobody is in favor of turning the Randall Road corridor into a self-storage haven. It primarily should be retail and I think it will remain retail. But what we have done is we have identified a use that will benefit the retail that's already existing. That's obviously Tesla. With respect to self-storage, I'm not telling you to look at it as a necessary evil, but I'm telling you to look at it as a necessity to get Tesla in. It's the only neighbor that Tesla can work with. And it's not just because of the traffic, it's not just because of the, the footprint. The developer of the self-storage is, has agreed to cover much of the build-out costs for the building. Once the demising wall is put up, it will work on the parking field that Tesla is going to use. It's created a bunch of economic incentives that will benefit Tesla and so it's shouldering a lot of the costs that are going to be associated with the redevelopment of the project. So this is a huge benefit for Tesla and obviously if they have to come in and convert this building on their own, they're not going to be able to use the entirety of it, plus they're going to bear an additional expense that they really don't have to under these I agree with what Mr., is it, is it Piper? You talked, you talked about, I think you alluded to the fact that you had some concerns with respect to this usage going into Randall Road. And I want to share something with everybody that I shared with the planning commission because I thought it was interesting. This came from the City of Batavia's economic development and redevelopment element in February of 2014. This is a quote with respect to the Randall Road corridor. Randall Road is a strategic regional artery, arterial roadway that has traditionally housed retail uses. There is pressure on Batavia's portion of Randall Road to distinguish itself and remain competitive. Market dynamics have created an environment where property owners will want to explore different, perhaps non-retail uses for existing properties. To remain competitive, the city may need to broaden allowed land uses in this corridor, allowing a greater variety of uses for properties located behind street frontages. This was written four years before Sam's Club closed, okay? It sounds like somebody might have had a crystal ball when they wrote this, but the point is, is six years after Sam's Club closed, did anybody think that we would still be here talking about trying to find a tenant for that building? I didn't understand or appreciate the gravity of it. I'm a resident of the area and I used to shop at Sam's Club and I didn't know anything about the restrictive covenants until I got involved in this deal. This is the only use, these are the only uses that really can go into this project, into this property. So that's why we're here before you. I'm going to call Linda up to go through the PowerPoint slides. We'll field any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chris. My name is Linda Coast. I'm with Realty Metrics Commercial. I have been working the Randall Road corridor for over 30 years. I won't admit to anything longer than that. I have done several developments up and down Randall Road that I have developed, that I've entitled, that I've sold, and I've done a lot of leasing. I was brought on by 20 Lakes to start working this project in March of 2020. And I just want to kind of give you an overview of my thoughts on the market, stepping aside from this development. We explored several options in regards to this property. We had the opportunity to meet with staff, we met with Laura, we talked through different opportunities, a pickleball facility, 40,000-square-foot fitness club, 120,000-square-foot adventure paintball club. And what it came down to consistently is we weren't able to secure a retailer or an entertainment user that could really utilize this whole property. So it really comes down to the depth of the building, the width of the building, the setback off of Randall. And so I'm jumping a little bit ahead of myself, but I really want to reiterate what Chris just said. This is the perfect partnership because self-storage can underwrite the economics for Tesla and they don't need any frontage of the building, they don't need the parking field, they're going to be tucked back on the back of the site. We're somewhat in a hole, there's no visibility, we're over 700 feet off of Randall and we're basically third-tier real estate. So it is, it's a really good use of the building, but let me backtrack a little bit. Noble Square, which is now Batavia Square, is situated on 17.66 acres. The building itself is 127,000 square feet. That's a massive building. One of the projects that I did on Randall Road recently is I was a partner and part of the redevelopment of the Dominic Center in Geneva. So we redeveloped that property and we did Burlington Coat Factory and Fresh Time. So to give you an idea of scale, you could put three Burlington Coat Factories into this building or four Fresh Times. So that, that kind of, I mean, it's, it's really hard to get an idea of what this size building means. There's no retailer out there today that can occupy this property. It's, it's too big, it's too deep and so really this is a great fit. So 127,000 square feet and just a massive building. I wanted to give you the mechanics of the property a little bit because I, you're hearing a lot of different names, you see a lot of different names within our PowerPoint, but Brad Noble and his dad Jim are with Bradley Financial. They're based out of Atlanta. Brad couldn't come here today because of the inclement weather, but we've been talking to him several times and he had a chance to talk to staff today, but, and I think he's on Zoom with us, so Brad's with us in spirit. They are the contract purchasers. The current owners of the property are 20 Lakes and they've been a great steward of the property. They've worked with the city really well. We've had the toy drive, we've, we worked out a nice lease for the vaccine people, we've got Soapbox Derby in there today, we did a prom giveaway dress, so they've been a great steward. So they're the underlying owners, 20 Lakes. Bradley Financial is the contract purchaser. Edwin Vidovitz is going to be the developer that 20 Lakes, I mean, excuse me, who's going to develop Tesla. And then, so the way this is all going to work is if we get your support and approval is that Bradley Financial will acquire the asset. He's going to come in, he's going to put the, the partition wall, firewall up and we're going to create a new plat of subdivision. He's going to do all the fire separation, he's going to do all the, the splitting of the utilities, he's going to do all the site work, which helps Tesla make sense of this building size and market. And then, once all the subdivision is done, then he's going to sell the front 45,000 square feet to Edwin, who is then going to work on behalf of Tesla to do all the interior major improvements of the site. And then Tesla will be coming in to do all their F, F, and E and all their interior design, bringing all the inventory to the, to the property. So I just wanted to let you know, those are all the parties to this development. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I do, actually. Can you go through the order of operations?
Yes.
What is built when, just real quick, sorry?
Sure. So once we close, and, and no, we're, we're feeling optimistic, so both Tesla and Bradley Financial, they're already starting their construction drawings because Tesla wants to open as soon as possible. They've accelerated the opening date, so we're jumping the gun a little bit, but, so Bradley Financial will close on the whole building. They'll start all the, all the site work, all the splitting of all the utilities and putting up the demising wall that's going to split the, the two spaces. Then, once that's completed, then they will sell the front condo to Edwin. And Edwin's going to start doing his work on Tesla and then Brad, so it's almost going to be simultaneous, Bradley Financial will start their self-storage and of the development. So first it's all the interior work, it's the site work, it's subdividing the space, and then both parties will start kind of simultaneously doing their interior improvements. And then lastly, Tesla will come in and they'll, they'll finish the build-out of their space. Okay, you're welcome.
Question. Who will own the front parking lot then?
That will all be Tesla. And when we get into the site plan here, you're going to see the demarcation line of how we're proposing to subdivide the property.
Okay.
Kind of touched on it a little bit before, but really the challenges we're seeing now is, and this was even pre-COVID, that there was really, we're starting to see a shift away from big boxes to online shopping. COVID really exacerbated that and, and it really pushed a lot of retailers out of the market. We had a tremendous amount of bankruptcies of the big-box retailers and so the online shopping really precluded our ability to entice a big-box retailer to come to this, to this market. The other downside of the site is great location, wonderful community, Randall Road address, but it's third-tier, it's really, it's set back in a hole and it's not part of what I'm going to call a power center. So you're not going to get any of the soft-good retailers that you would normally see, like if you, other projects up and down Randall Road where you see, well, for instance Burlington Coat Factory. So you had soft goods, you had Best Buy, you had grocery, you had At Home, that's a power center. This property is isolated, it sits by itself, so those retailers that rely on foot traffic from other retailers were not interested in this property. And then if you do the overlay of all the restricted uses that Walmart overlaid on this when they sold the property, it really limited the retailers that we could entice to the So here we are today with what I think is a great proposed solution. We've got a great partnership, we've got a quiet user in the back that's going to be a, a good amenity to the community, self-storage is needed and it's going to be a really great neighbor to the new Pulte subdivision. Quiet, they're not going to be getting in the big semi-tractor trailers at all hours of the night, limited foot traffic, all contained indoors and there's not going to be any outside storage. That was something that we worked closely with. Work with Tesla and bring a really fantastic dynamic retailer to Batavia. Reiterate again, what's really important about self-storage that no other retailer could bring as a, as a partner with Tesla is they don't need any parking out front, they don't need any of the frontage of the building and they're just going to be tucked back in the back of the building. So you're really going to get a sense of, these are two very distinct users and you've got retail across the front which complements the Randall Road corridor. Some of the comments that we received from staff is, you know, let's make sure that all the colors coordinate. This is a, this Tesla rendering is what we're proposing. If you can maybe go to the next slide. So that's, that's going to be your look. So it's going, the old Sam's Club facade is, is completely gone. All the concrete block will, will be covered with a fresh look. There's going to be a new entrance developed that's going to have a, a great, modern, contemporary feel to it. They're tucked in the back and you can see there's a, there was a, a red band that staff asked us to change, so we've added that color and I, I think it's dynamic, they look well together, they look good together, but they also look very different. So there's no confusion on the site plan. Couple of things that we really want to highlight here, on the far west side of the site plan, we're going to be putting in a privacy fence that just adds that much more and we're going to weave it kind of into the mature trees that you already, backside of this project. So we're going to add a privacy fence. The other thing that you'll notice between the park, adding a connection of the interior access road. Right now, there's access to the back of the Sam's building, but it's, it stops. And so we're kind of where the, kind of where that curve is, that's where the old, go back to, go back to the west a little bit. So right there, that's kind of where the access stops. So you could, you could go through the truck docks and then you'd have to circle back around out onto Mill Street. So it was advised and suggested that we add this connection of this access road, which I think is going to make the traffic flow better and I think it's better for fire safety. So I think that was a good suggestion. Along the access road that's shared between the build-out lot users, Portillo's and Chuck E Cheese, et cetera. The other thing that was suggested and we'd agree, was agreed to by Tesla's, we're limiting the access road. So there's not, so we're reducing the potential for traffic conflict coming in and out. In addition to that, we're also going to be doing a stamped concrete right-of-way that connects the Tesla parking lot to the sidewalk on the east side of the access road, so walkable pedestrian and bicycle traffic to get from one part. Vertical line that's subdividing the car dealership from the self-storage. So that is the demising wall that's going to be proposed and that will be the line in which the plat of survey falls. All the parking field to the, it all flows with Tesla. Everything to the immediate north also flows to Tesla and Drew, can you kind of show how we jog? Everything to the, that, that interior parking field is all going to be dedicated to Tesla. Privacy fence, all dead plant materials, dead trees that are in the parking islands right now. Add additional plant materials to supplement the site and anything that's been removed will be replaced. Also, an important topic in today's environment, we want to talk about green and we want to talk about sustainability. Well, the very, the best thing that you can do to stay green is to use an existing building. The energy cost of demolition and rebuilding and all the energy and the materials and the cost to do that is very expensive. So I, I think this is a good way to go. So I, I think this is a good way to go green. The other thing that's also going to happen is we're going to be using LED lighting in the parking lot. Economic benefits. Certainly, this building has been sitting dormant. Real estate taxes have, value of the asset has declined, meaning that the real estate taxes have declined. Also, there hasn't been any sales. Happy to say that Tesla will be a, a great economic, a retail sales tax generator. Cost of improvements to the building will certainly, um, I mean, accelerate the, the value and real estate taxes will be climbing. And so the, um. I kind of think I already talked through the thoughtful improvements, but again, we're going to add a crosswalk to promote pedestrian, like used to connect to the existing sidewalk. We're going to remove and replace it. Like throughout the parking lot with LED bulbs. Old rooftop units will. Privacy fence will be constructed along the west property line. And then we're also going to be very sensitive to the lighting in the back of the building to not negatively impact the residential. So there'll be. I also want to mention, we've got a representative from Tesla here and she.
Yeah, I have a question about the Tesla.
Okay.
So I don't know who. Throughout this packet, it says dealership. But from everything I understand, Tesla really doesn't do the traditional dealership. They have showrooms, they have service centers. So what is going to be in this space?
Yes, so it will be service and sales. So it is, um, Tesla doesn't do dealerships. It's all owned by Tesla, the company. So it'll be sales and service.
Can you clarify what service means? Is it where if somebody's Tesla breaks down, they can bring it to this location?
Correct. Yes, it'll be like maintenance or any type of like normal repairs. It will not be bodywork.
So we, we keep speaking as though this building is, is a fact of nature. It'll be there till the end of time. Just like how inevitable it sounds. How much is that building worth versus the rest of the property? What's the assessment there? If you can.
Um, I can, I probably am not at liberty to disclose what the purchase price is. Sold for 2.2 million to 20 Lakes.
Back in the, back in the past.
Back in 2020.
But that's the entire property.
That was the entire property.
I'm curious about how much of that value is in the building itself versus the land.
Typically, when you look at an investment property, you look at the value of the building based on income that it's generating. When you look at a vacant building, then you start to look at, at, at the value on a cost per square foot of the building. And the land plays into it a little bit, but in this case, not much because of the depth of the, of the building and the setback and the topography of it. But to answer your question, if you look at an, a, a building that is tenanted, you look at the end, income stream and your value is based on the income. When it's vacant, we look at, um, just the value on a cost per square foot basis. So, um, in this case, it was vacant. It'd been vacant for two years. It was marketed prolifically. Uh, there was a lot of people that took a run at it. 20 Lakes was willing to close even in the face of the looming lockdown. And so they paid 2.2 million.
Right. I suppose what I'm suggesting here is looking at the property tax assessment for the property.
Right.
Most of the value of this property is in the land. The building itself is not worth very much at all. Like, we have single buildings downhound that are worth more than this, that aren't even that luxurious. I'm just kind of surprised there isn't an economic case for just tearing the building down. It's a shell. It's, it's almost less useful in its current form than something else in its place because we have so many limitations on what can actually, what the space can be used for.
Well, even if we.
I know it's not my money, but.
Well, even if we, even if we knocked it down, even if we knocked it down, the cost of new construction is exorbitant. Right? So maybe when this building was built, what do you think? $80 to $120 a foot in 2008? New construction today, raw, no interior improvements, it could be $180 to $220 a foot. So you can't, I, I, if, if somebody comes to me and says, Linda, I want a 40,000 square foot building. I said, all right, we're going to do whatever we can to find an existing building for you because the replace, to replace or build new, it's unattainable right now. And so that was, that's what's so exciting about this building for Tesla. They didn't have to do new construction. They could rely on their co-tenant or their partner to put in a lot of the improvements and make it economically feasible. To build new construction right now is, is not attainable.
That's fair?
Yep.
I guess I'm just mostly cautious because it's a fair amount of land. This is about half of our downtown. We're getting two businesses out of it. It just seems there's so much more potential there. Maybe not at this very moment, like you said, because the construction market is kind of out of control. But, and, and I'm fine with the current use. I really don't like have any problem with what is going in there because when we're over, we, we're just in a bad situation all around. And this isn't the end of the world hardly. But I just worry that we're going to lock in a land use that is a lot less productive than if we might wait a few more years. And I know that hurts your side. I'm, I'm not against it.
Well, I think it's a, it's a very good conversation to have and to mull over. But we've been, this property has been marketed for six years. And this is the, the best combination of users and it's the highest economic generator you could get. That's the thing. Tesla, if you're looking at your budgets and you're looking for retail sales tax dollars, there's not a quote retailer out there that could beat the sales that Tesla is going to bring to the community. And that's really important. And as far as land use goes, a lot of this land is in a detention pond. So take that into consideration. If you carve out the detention pond, because there's a massive detention pond to the north and, and the mayor asked us to explore, could that be redeveloped? It was going to cost $2 or $3 million to backfill that pond. So it's economically not feasible. And Tesla can use the entire parking field that sits in front of the building. So we really are use, it's really the highest and best use of the building, in, in my opinion.
Fair enough. If I could just add, you, you have to understand that the reason that the building sold for $2.2 million is because of the restrictive covenants. Not just the building, the 17.66 acres. The covenants run with the land, not the building. So you said for a few more years, we could maybe wait it out. That's almost 22 years. So whoever buys the property, if they wanted to develop retail, they would have to get Walmart's blessing. And as long as Walmart is in business, I don't think Walmart is going to consent to a mire or whatever store might go in there, whatever retail use might go in there. But they're very, very, if you, if you look at the covenants, they're very restrictive.
Oh, I agree. And I, I will say, the real villain here is whoever put those covenants in place.
Well, Walmart put them in place when they, when they marketed the property. And the reason that 20 Lakes bought it for, we'll say a song, $2.2 million for 17 and a half acres on Randall Road or off Randall Road is because there was very little that they could do to put it to use, which is why they started marketing it, which is why it's taken six years to get to where we are, to find a, a use or uses that can go there that won't violate those restrictive covenants.
Now, we are opening up the mixed use. Has there been any consideration to take advantage of that, you know, looser regulatory regime to maybe even include further back apartments? There are homes right across the street from there, so it's not so outrageous that, you know, residences could be there.
I believe that's one of the restrictions. I'll let Drew speak to this. But one of the restrictions that we put was we were not going to allow any type of housing on the property. So residential was, was not a part of the equation.
Yeah. One thing we have, you know, we've investigated the, the, sort of the utility situation on this property. This particular sewer shed, particularly is very limited. So that's where we did put a condition, uh, in terms of, um, change in use. There, uh, it's condition, one of the conditions, first conditions of the plan development ordinance, uh, it is written to allow any, if Tesla, basically if Tesla was not in the front location and another use was to go into that space, uh, it limits, uh, storage from going into that, that use or that area, uh, per one of the conditions or one of the covenants that, uh, that the applicant is looking to add. But it would also allow any other permitted uses except for retail, excuse me, residential that the mixed use does permit. Again, because we have investigated the, the sanitary sewer capacity in particular in this sewer shed is, is very constrained.
I see. That's fair. One minor little point for you. Looking at the building covenant that exists, at least as discussed in this presentation, it says discount stores, wholesale grocery store, distribution centers, farm. Pawn shop, bar, nightclub, or alcohol distributor. What about very small scale retail, what you might call micro retail?
Uh, so, and Chris may have a, a more precise response on this, but I believe the, uh, covenants limit based on a certain size. I don't know what the threshold is, and I could be incorrect on that and, or Linda might want to correct me too, but.
There, there isn't like a, um, a square footage.
Okay.
It's just, it's just across the board limitations. So we couldn't do a micro oil change facility because that's in conflict with what Walmart likes to provide.
I guess the reason I bring this up, and this is more of just curious about how this space might evolve in the future. It's not going to be requirement on you guys at all. I've found examples in my own life, in fact, of used storage places being sort of semi-redeveloped to include small retail outlets, not unlike our boardwalk shops out here. And I was wondering if potentially in the future, that could be an avenue of additional economic development in that area that wouldn't, would, it might or might not hit the covenant.
Would that have been a good use to explore?
I'm not going to ask you guys that. It's, could it evolve into that in the future? Potentially. Really just throwing the suggestion out there and not putting any pressure on it whatsoever.
I think, I think we, we talk about. Firewalls per code. In multiple locations with a building that size, you, you, it's just, you just.
That's not what I'm requesting. Like, using the existing storage pods. This is a thing I've seen in a lot of towns, using those for what can be equivalently described as micro retail. Like, a tiny record shop was one that I really enjoyed.
Alderman Peiper, can I get a point of order on this?
Yes, please.
It's not for them to speculate or brainstorm about potential uses of this in this session right now.
Fair.
Please just stick to asking questions about this exact development.
Okay.
You don't have to vote for it. But brainstorming with them about alternatives to this building, this is not the place and the time of that, in my opinion.
That is valid. I, to be clear, I was asking Drew originally if that would be hit by the original building covenant for my own purpose, for my own curiosity. And again, it's, I don't wish to like, you know, educate that point with you guys because it's, is beyond the defined definition of what is being loaded on here. And I'm fine with that. Fair enough. Thank you very much.
No, I mean, I, I love discussions. I'm just saying, I don't want to have three hours on this.
Oh, yeah.
When we have another great topic ahead of us tonight.
I know.
Let's have a brainstorm session about what we could potentially do as a separate meeting. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Fair enough. And that was my concluding thing. So thank you very much.
Just to put, put some color to this. Even though we don't necessarily read the restrictive covenants as prohibiting, uh, the, the type of service that Tesla would provide for electric vehicles, we still had to go to Walmart to get approval for that. And there's, there's no, there's no oil changes, obviously, that are going to be happening at the Tesla dealership. But because of their car care center that they have at the Walmart, we had to go and get permission just to, to do some work on the electric vehicles. So would basically have to go kiss the ring is, is what you, if you go to Walmart and say, hey, you want to put in a mire here? And they say, great, God bless. So, but I don't think that that's going to happen.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
One more quick Tesla question. It was mentioned that these facilities, the self-storage and the Tesla service centers are existing, cohabitating together. Are there other examples of that? Has it been successful?
Um, I couldn't speak to that. So that would be more of on our real estate team so we can.
Tony?
Uh, yeah, there's, when, when Sam's was open there, we knew how much revenue came in. Have there been projections to show, uh, what kind of revenue we could expect from, uh, from the sales tax on this?
I don't know.
Why, that's, I know, but compared to. That's why I bring up Sam's.
Yeah, I don't have the exact information. We are publicly traded, so we can't do the exact numbers. But we did have in Orland Park, one of our more, like more recent store openings, it's, you receive sales tax for 2% from zip codes outside of here, as well as like anything that's sold in Batavia, you get the full sales tax amount. I don't have the exact numbers, but I can send that information. Um, yeah.
First and foremost, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Edwin Vidovitz and I'm the developer for the Tesla dealership. Thank you for having us this evening. But in, in an effort to, um, help out with that answer, we've done quite a bit of communication with staff on the sales tax that the, the, the city of Batavia would benefit from. I believe staff has also cross-checked that with some of their colleagues in other municipalities where there is a Tesla sales and service center. So I don't know, Laura or Drew or.
Yeah, I contacted Brian Townsend, who's the city manager for Schaumburg, uh, which is another dealership. I don't know how comparable the expected sales amounts could be there. But, um, he said that they, the, the 2% is splits between the state and local municipality, I believe. And so Brian Townsend was saying approximately 1%. Now, I don't know, you know, how, what volume of sales we can expect there, but the, you know, average vehicle cost being $60,000, you know? So just, it is a, a very good number. And it's hard to project because I don't know what the, you know, volume of sales is.
Yeah, it's.
But it's 1%.
Projection is what, you know.
And, and Mr. Malley, I think the question you're asking to be completely direct is, what is the gross sales that this dealership is projecting on an annual basis? And that was.
If I know 1% in that number, I could do that.
Correct. And, and unfortunately, I'm not at liberty to say, not only because I don't know, but because Tesla doesn't share that information. Uh, and that's consistent with a lot of public retailers that don't. So I want to answer your question directly, even though we answered it indirectly earlier or tried to.
Understand. So. I was, you know, and I equated it to what we were getting. We were getting 3/4 of a million dollars from, from Sam's Club. And, you know, that's, as we go out to the community and say, well, you know, why'd you approve this, uh, storage? And it's like, well, look at this, you know? We, you know, we're trying to bring back what we used to have in, in terms of revenue. So, but I understand that, that's.
The, the, the average ticket cost will be much, a little bit higher at Tesla than it would be at Sam's. But, um, with, with that said in a positive light also, any cars that are purchased in Batavia or picked up or delivered in Batavia will benefit, Batavia will benefit from that sales tax. So the, uh, that was, there was a question early on at one of our initial meetings, what happens when somebody orders a car? If, if they order the car and they pick it up in Batavia, Batavia will benefit from that.
It's, uh, the sales tax, uh, as this slide says, is based on the seller's location, not the buyer's location.
Yep. And as you can appreciate. And as you can appreciate, there's only a dozen or so dealerships in the state of Illinois, and this is the furthest dealership west that will be here. So we're hoping that it's a nice pop here.
Yeah, I would just make a note to keep in mind, I mean, I think this is a very good opportunity. Not only is it the fastest, and by the way, I'm not like a huge electric car guy, but they, there's no denying it's the fastest growing vehicle brand in the country. They have, I think, five of the top seven or 10 selling vehicles in the country right now. Not to mention some of the intangibles that come along with just the Tesla name. I mean, I think we all know that there is some buzz around the Tesla name. So to have that dealership and for that not to be in Naperville or St. Charles, I mean, I think this is a massive opportunity. And to top off all of the, you know, crazy Walmart restrictions that I totally understand why, you know, we took that leap when we did probably because it's Walmart and Sam's Club. But this is, this is a, with those in place, this is, to me, sounds like a no-brainer. So that's just my, my two cents there.
The point, the city didn't have anything to do with those covenants. That's all on the land sale when Walmart sold that. So that's really, you know, that's, that's, that's their non-compete. Sure. That's out there on Randall Road, and that's something that's very hard to overcome.
Absolutely, yep.
Drew, I think you touched on this a little bit, but if the, the front of the building would never be designated as storage at any point.
Correct. So I will find the condition, but essentially the applicant has indicated or provided a draft covenant, which we then refer to in ordinance 2404, the plan development. So that, that restrictive covenant is referenced there. But essentially what, from the city's perspective, expansion into that space would be prohibited by this ordinance. The other portions of that language, or the other parts of that section talk about basically other permitted uses could go in there. So the recreation use that we've, you know, talked about, or if, if, again, if the covenant's allowed, a restaurant or something of those could go into that space if the Tesla dealer was no longer there.
Thank you. That does help because that was part of my question. I mean, when I was hearing kind of like the timeline of events, it was, the building was going to be renovated, is that correct, by Noble Family Enterprises? And then sold to Tesla at some point? But my concern would be if, who knows what happens in the next few years and Tesla decides to back out of this, where does that leave this project?
It leaves the project as a vacant building that is going to be released under the existing zoning permitted uses.
No, no storage units?
No.
So they.
Not unless, not unless the city council approves it at a later date.
So it, these come together or not at all?
I'm sorry, say it one more time?
These come together or not at all at this point? Like the, these, the, the storage in the Tesla?
Yes, it's a package deal. That's correct. Without storage, there is no Tesla.
Somebody wanted to do something different, say in five or 10 years, they'd be back here in front of us to be able to get that allowed.
Right. Actually, my.
If somebody wanted to do storage in the Tesla space, we'd be back here in front of you, making the request. Correct.
You said there's no storage without Tesla, but I'm, without Tesla, there's no storage, is what I want to hear.
So the back half of the building would not be storage if Tesla backs out?
No.
So I, you know, my.
I'm sorry, I'm a little slow tonight.
I think my understanding is that if this city council would say they would allow the 100% of the use of the building to be storage, you'd probably have a lot of people who would come in here and propose that. And staff was pretty adamant that this council would not approve the former Sam's Club becoming 100% self-storage. So they needed to find a partner to come in and propose developments that would satisfy your concerns about, you know, the economic benefits associated with this development for the city of Batavia.
And that's what I'm, that's what I wanted to hear. And I also want to make sure that we are all clear that that is going to be the legal agreement between the city and between the development.
What is the legal agreement? I'm sorry.
So what I'm, what I think I'm hearing you say is that the risk that the city is taking by putting storage on our Randall Road is a little bit alleviated by the idea of an exciting Tesla dealership. But if Tesla isn't part of it, some of us would not support the self-storage. So what guarantees are in place or what kind of ramifications are in place? If for something, stuff happens, deals fell through, what happens if Tesla suddenly is not part of the package?
Third time's a charm. Now I understand the question. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The answer to that question is we've mitigated that, we've done our best to mitigate that concern with the affidavit that we will sign, that I will sign, that there is a lease in place for the Tesla portion of the building that we're illustrating here.
And.
But like, yes.
And city staff has done due diligence and feels confident in.
Took us a long time to get there. It really did.
Staff, staff really wanted this to all be self-storage, and we fought hard to get Tesla.
I guarantee that is not the position.
So.
Abby?
I have a short list. And just kind of to follow up with that one then too, is there anything we can do that, say Tesla goes in for three years, it's a great three-year run, but then they decide to leave? Are there any vacancy restrictions we can put on the property owner then to? It's kind of like, I'm thinking about the downtown plan and that proposal, something.
So one of the things. Tesla's going to own it, right? Tesla will own it.
No, it's a lease.
Oh, it's a lease.
So one of the things that we looked at was a payment in lieu of receiving that retail tax revenue. And the, the Noble Development Team said that would make the project not financially feasible from their standpoint. It is something that we asked about, though.
Maggie just brought to my attention that there's 237 Tesla Sales and Service Centers throughout the entire country, and to date of those 237, zero have closed since then.
That was going to be my, one of my questions because that's one thing that I did look, and I could not find one that had any, any search that ever closed one of the centers that they had opened. They may have renovated or expanded it, but they've never closed one.
And to be clear, that doesn't mean that they may not in the future. As we all know, things happen, but to date of 237, all 237 are still open.
We did have like first generation locations, like locations that opened sales and service separate that have closed, but now that we have like the brand awareness, none of the locations that are combined have closed out of the 237.
Okay, my next question, and these are just going to be kind of random, so I apologize if it popcorns to all of you. With it being, you know, the challenging site that it is for retail anyway, but I would assume that Tesla's not going to use all 439 stalls of parking that are out there? Or do you think, anticipate that that would be?
I, I don't know how many of the stalls are going to be filled at any given point in time, but the, the parking field was, was drafted with what Tesla wanted. So I think that that's the best way to answer that question. The, the number of parking slots that we're, we're putting into.
Yeah, we're expecting about like 35 employees. So obviously employee parking, service center vehicles in and out, usually we see about 20 inventory. That kind of varies, but, but no, we won't be using the entire parking lot. Most of it should be open for, for most of that time.
And I would imagine, go ahead.
And the additional parking as well as due to quarterly deliveries, there is a significant amount of cars that are delivered on a quarterly basis for delivery. They're out on the parking lot being prepared for delivery to the customer that ordered them. For example, detailing, anything that, you know, the car comes off the truck, it doesn't get delivered that way.
So you're saying we could expect about 400 per quarter?
You're trying to back into the number that I've been trying to get to for a long time.
But I mean, I would suppose, that is a giant parking lot built for Black Friday for Sam's Club. But there's probably no opportunities for outlots because you're not going to want the visibility reduced and everything like that. Is there any, are you open to any removal of some of the impervious surface for permeable surfaces just to, I mean, it's, the parking lot, the permeable or impermeable surface there is vast.
The, the parking requirements were, I believe, 400 or more cars at the time, based on the operations direction that I received from the real estate people at corporate.
I believe that they also have had approval for a store, I believe in Buffalo Grove or somewhere in the northwest suburbs that has like 400 spaces also, I believe.
And you said 35 employees? How many, how many jobs do you think the self-storage will create?
Two, maybe. We're, we're not going to have a night watchman. So it's, we'll, we'll have people who probably do some security, but it's, it's really going to be kind of a self-sufficient operation.
Okay. And then, yeah, I would, I, I share some of Dustin's concerns too, that we're, we're locking ourselves not only into a land use in this spot forever, but feels like self-storage is a forever commitment because that seems like it comes with a lot of inertia, that stuff's not going to move. So regardless of what might come and go in the front, that, you know, we're setting that precedent and possibly for other spaces in our Randall Road corridor or other spots in town, I can see this becoming a very attractive thing. And, and it sounds great because when I'm listening, I'm like, yeah, that's a corner that's not going to see much else. So might as well. And then future councils go, eh, might as well, it's working over there and it's fine. And I'm just like trying to resist any votes of it's fine and would rather be excited about what's being built in my town. So, yeah, I'll pause for now.
I certainly can understand that concern and I'm, you know, very glad that as opposed to some other communities that have seen a lot of their big box leave their towns, instead, we've seen a lot of our other big box stores make further investments in their stores, like Menards and the expansion that they did, Kohl's and the remodeling that they did, and adding the Sephora inside. Target has done, I think, two different rounds of incredible renovation, the Aldi store also.
Walmart, Walmart as well.
And Walmart as well. So I understand that concern because it, it probably is a forever choice and we shouldn't make it easily.
And I think that, that echoes back to why we really didn't want to allow this in the general commercial district and create a separate district that would allow us to have a substantial amount of control. And if we say, let's Menards or some, one of the big box in town decides they want to do this, that really provides a significant restriction for this. We only allow these normally in our industrial districts. So, you know, this was a big step. We were resistant to this from the beginning. You know, we still have some concerns about the use itself, but you know, with the Tesla, you know, that has certainly helped assuage certain concerns, but not fully, obviously, but it, it certainly helps the situation.
I'd like to say that I think that with the zoning overlay and the conditional use that the front half of this property is now being created for its highest and best use because there aren't other retailers out there that could, that could use that depth. And only uses that are allowed in this mixed-use district would be allowed to come back into that, the, the front 45,000 square feet. So you've got very good control on the uses that can go in the front, the front condo, I'm going to call it. And again, self-storage will agree to a restriction that they will never expand into that front portion of the building. And the only way that could be contemplated is to go through the whole approval process again. And so I think staff did a wonderful job working with us to create a control on that front 45,000 square feet. So it remains retail, it remains a generator, and we can't predict the future, but I think it was a, a good compromise all the way around to maximize value and create an opportunity to bring a retailer back into the community.
As I hear, think about this, Laura, as you said, you know, with the other retailers, they don't have these covenants in place. So if the Target, if the Menards were to go out of business, they could be divided up into smaller micro businesses to be put in because they don't have these covenants in place where this location has that.
That's right. It's the unusual circumstance for, because they had adjacent properties, right? And they closed one of them and they didn't want whatever came in to compete with the one that stayed. The other are standalone locations, so they're more likely to sell to another retailer.
Absolutely.
I was going to give the example of the Avenue Chevy property.
Yes.
That was out there. That's a property that had no covenants on it, that had no restrictions on it. So it was easy to clean slate that. It wasn't, you know, a massive building. It was basically a tin shed with a brick facade and then start over and redo that. I don't think we ever contemplated filling in all the outlots that have been filled in along Randall Road over the last five years when I got on the council in 2003. That wasn't part of what we did or the way Randall Road was designed, but it's evolved. And I think this is just another evolution. And this is a really, not a bad, but a weird site to try to reuse. If I had the money, I'd level everything, build a hotel looking over the marsh, and that's what I would put out there. But it's not my property and I don't have that money. So, you know, I think we're, we're dealing with a situation where I think this is probably one of the best things we could do with that without having total control over the property. And we don't have it because Walmart has it. And that's the reality. The property owner has, you know, the right to put that on there when they sell it. Nick?
Yeah, I was just going to say at the beginning, I didn't, I wasn't for this, but it's been impressive to see the process, the flexibility and the persistence between staff and the developers to make this amenable and doable is, is impressive and, and I'm now excited about it. So it's got my vote.
Chris, go ahead.
I also would like to just reiterate what was just said by Alderman Wolf and Alderman Malley, that I believe that this has been very well thought out. There's been many compromises, it seems like, you know, just like anytime when there's a mediation in something, not everybody's going to be happy with everything. That's how you know it's a good deal. Because if nobody's exactly 100% happy, it means everybody compromised a little bit and we're getting a good deal here, I think. We're bringing in a world-renowned car company. There's no other one in the area. I don't see it going out of business in three years. I really don't have any worry about that. So I also am voting yes, and I believe that this was, it was a long process, but I believe the process was handled well. I believe that everything's been open and upfront, and I think that what we've come to here is, is a good solution for a long, long, longstanding empty property.
Mark, you're next.
Yeah, I just, I'm in favor of this. I want to thank everybody for their creativity and the flexibility in coming up with the solutions they came up with because there's, yeah, nothing good, they can really go there the way we would always want, the way we would dream of things. And we could wait for dreams, but we could be waiting for 20 years. There's a, there's a place on top of the hill here that nothing's happened in that, even though we thought something was going to happen there. And so waiting sometimes is nice, but if we wait, then it just ends up being empty and we get zero taxes.
Tony?
Yeah, Chris, I just want to clarify, that was Nick that spoke before. However, I, I do agree, you know, this would have been, I don't think, this would have been a hard pill to swallow, you know, within a year or two after Sam's had closed. But now that it's sitting open for a while, I don't think we can, we can't let the perfect be the enemy of good because I don't think the perfect's going to happen. So I'm, I'm in full support of this. I'm pretty excited about a Tesla dealership in Batavia. Tim, I totally agree with that. I think that will, will, is the best we can do at this time. You know, I negotiate a lot of contracts and that's, you know, that comes down to, is this the best you can do at this time, best you can agree to at this time? And I think this is.
And just for the record, yeah, just for the record, since I, I cannot see who's speaking, so I was totally wrong, but, so I also would like to say that I am in favor of Alderman Malley's comments that he made just now in that what I was referencing before was. was Alderman Seron. Thank you very much and I apologize.
Thanks for the clarification.
Surprised he said something intelligent.
Okay, any other comments? Or should we go through these one at a time and vote on them? I think that our next step.
Let me just reiterate that. I think what you guys are hearing loud and clear is that the reason we are willing to move forward is because of the Tesla. And so if that, that is a key component to this development. And I'm kind of feeling what Abby's feeling, like I don't want to just settle with something because it's been vacant and why not. I want to, I want to be excited. I would be much more excited if this was a hotel and restaurants and keep development in or, you know, a piece of property in our, in Batavia on a major road in between two towns near the highway-ish. But, you know, like this would, that would be much more visionary for, for us. And even with the covenants, I mean, okay, so in 20 years, we get to do retail there. You know, 20 years is not that long. But knowing though that we have this great car company that is interested in being in Batavia, I think is making it exciting for us too.
I would just say, I would go so far as to say this is a marketing play for the town. I mean, this is the same thing as bringing in a giant Apple store or anything like that. I mean, in my opinion, this is going to, the Batavia name, you know, comes out of people's mouth a lot more because of Tesla dealerships here. So I'm definitely for it.
Tesla on one side and Fermilab on the other.
City of energy.
You think of things that the city has been known for, and this is going to be one of those, you know, into the future, that that's one of the things people will talk about, is it's the one and only Tesla dealer out here.
I approached this podium for, I wanted to address one item before you took this to vote because I sensed that's where this is going. I think oftentimes, city councils forget one item, that companies like Tesla come here because of the work that you guys do to this city to make it attractive for Tesla to open up a store here. So I say that, you know, we've, we've, not we, but Tesla has chosen Batavia and selected Batavia to open up a dealership because of the work that Batavia does. So I don't want that to get lost in, in any of this. But I do appreciate the support of the comments that we've just heard over the last 10 minutes. So thank you for that. And we have worked very, very hard for a very long time to try to come to some agreement. And I think that we have come to an agreement with staff on 99% of the items. And staff has worked very hard with us on this and they've been very responsive. And for that, we're very appreciative. And we were discussing these items up until 3:00 PM today. We do have one open item that I think needs, when you do take this to a vote, needs to be considered and amended. One, what's very important to us today is to ensure our timeline, we have a final vote today that does not have any conditions that we haven't already agreed to or discussed in the staff report. And one of those conditions that is still out there is the, the formation of an SSA area or the potential for SSA or SSD.
Potential for an SSA.
Correct. For an SSA.
Right.
And we're asking that you remove that request in the conditions.
So one of the things that I wanted to clarify was if the SSA were to include all the adjacent properties to that road, would that make a difference in your choice? I thought perhaps there might have been a little bit something lost in the translation that we were considering putting the SSA only on three property owners on the west side of the road.
There's a new, there's, there's several reasons that we just can't agree to the SSA. That doesn't mean that you can't implement it in the future. But the request was that the applicant does not object to it in the future. And of course, anything could happen in the future. But to, A, pre-approve anything right now or to agree to not object to something that may arise in the future, B, we would need approval from the outlawed owners as well because they are part of a recorded declaration that's on title. That would be like herding cats, getting the owners and the tenants and their attorneys to review things. And three, I would have to go back and get Tesla to approve it as well. And we just don't have that time. But above everything else, we already have an obligation to maintain and repair that road in the recorded declaration that's been provided to the city that is of public record. So the request that is being made of us is already one that is an obligation, not a request by the other tenants as well, of the applicant to maintain that. And of course, Tesla will require it as well. They don't want potholes. They don't want roads that are not taken care of. And the maintenance agreement is for the snowplow, not the maintenance and repair of the road.
That's correct.
Correct. Yeah.
That is correct. It is just that the city of Batavia has in the past had experiences with other shopping centers where there were shared roads on the interior and there had been no, what would you call, association set up for the maintenance of that, and they fell into disrepair. And I understand you're saying that Tesla is a brand name that would not want to have that situation happen in front of them. But that was staff's way of trying to assure that in the circumstance that the owner of that road did not maintain it properly because it is so much used even by those traversing to other shopping centers that we could make the repairs ourself, but charge it back to the adjacent landowners. But it, like you say, that's the 1% that kind of stands in the way of us moving forward on this.
Yeah. And I think from the standpoint of the SSA is we're looking at this as a backup SSA. This is not going to be an active SSA.
Right.
We don't want to activate it. This is no different than we did with the Crash Champions property, where we did the backup SSA for that area in the event that the property owners decided they did not want to maintain it or what have you. So, you know, this is typical in many developments that we have. We did it in Wind Winding Creek. We did it in a lot of our residential developments. We create backup SSAs all the time. All we were asking for is for these owners to not object to it if we should create it. The intention would be is all the property owners in this development, including the Portillo's, the Chuck E. Cheese, would be included as part of that because they obviously benefit from the roadway improvements. We would only activate it if their association decides that they do not want to maintain that roadway.
And I can appreciate the sensitivity to that matter. Again, record a document that obligates us and requires us to maintain it. It is not an option. We could be put into default. And when I say we, the applicant can be put into default if he does not maintain the roadway. And will be by Tesla.
Is that part of the agreement, Scott?
We're not obligating them to maintain it, but if they don't maintain it, the SSA would then cause the city to maintain it. And that would then be on their property tax, you know, for the maintenance costs. I mean, they're already obligated to maintain it by their, by their, you know, covenants and their association. But if they should decide not to, then the option would be for us to create, to activate an SSA that would be imposed over the area.
We implemented SSAs after the fact?
We have.
Is that of, I mean, so we can get the timeline done and then if need be?
We can. The only, the only issue that we have here is we would prefer for these two owners to not object to creation of the SSA. It makes it easier because, you know, if we have a certain number of property owners object to it, then we, we don't create it. We can't create it. So basically what we're just looking to have is a condition of the conditional use is they do not object to creation of the SSA.
Yes, I have one question before I answer what I want to say. Is there a current SSA out there for the current property owners?
No, there's not.
Okay. I guess I don't want to hold this up because of that question. And if it gets to that situation, the current city council at that time can enact the SSA. I mean...
If they'd say no, if the property, if a majority of the property owners say no, then we cannot. That's the difference.
Do you have other avenues of recourse?
Through litigation.
Letting the road be in, in disrepair, really. It's, you know, the property owner's obligation, just like any property's owner's obligation to maintain the road. I guess if it gets in a certain state of disrepair that people's cars end up, you know, being damaged, it creates a liability situation for the property owner themselves.
Temporary concrete blocks at the entrance to the road?
Only in Aurora you can use a gate.
Right. That's true.
Allow me to frame it this way. Only, and I hope, I hope this comes out the, in a very respectful manner. This is a private road that is maintained, that is obligated to be maintained by a recorded document. And parties to that document are national tenants, Tesla, Chuck E. Cheese, Portillo's. Never say never in this world. I've seen crazy things, but I just don't see any of those tenants not putting the, the applicant in default if they don't properly maintain it for their customers to ensure that they protect, to ensure that that road protects the image. There's potholes and that road's in disrepair. They're going to lose customers.
They busted my tire in the parking lot of other very national brands a couple blocks down the road once. So I've seen national brands let their roads go into bad shape on Randall Road.
Unfortunately, we have the example of where Crash Champions was. That road was in poor condition. And we did create the SSA to address this specific situation. We did not activate it, but it was in place that if the property owners couldn't come to an agreement, then we could activate that special service area.
I'm not sure Tesla would want to do that to their customers. They cater to a different group of people that expect certain things and they will abide to that.
Unless they want to replace more tires and wheels.
Right.
As another business line.
But can you though?
That was a bad joke.
With the covenant.
At the wrong time. I'm just trying to lighten the mood a little.
I mean, I'm, I'm sad that we're not going to see the wheelies in the parking lot anymore.
In, in summary, I can appreciate why staff is asking for it. I respect why staff is asking for it. We're asking that the vote be, have it omitted. And frankly, the final comment is, I'm not even, and I'm not the applicant, to be clear. The applicant, I'm not even sure can agree to this without the approval of all the, the outlawed owners. In fact, I'm almost certain of that. Not certain of it, but I'm almost certain of it.
We're not asking them to agree to it. We're just asking them not to object to it. That's the clarity.
I don't know that he can agree to not object, to make, to take any action on behalf of the declaration that's underlying.
I guess we'll respectfully disagree, but.
That's the only item that we have an impasse on with staff. And, and, you know, we're trying to do it in the most respectful way, but we're asking that that vote is taken without it.
I'd just like to say, I cannot see any of these people out there on that road, be it Portillo's or the gaming company or Tesla, just sitting there letting that road go to hell and having all their customers and everybody complain about it. Whether there's an SSA or not, I think it's going to get fixed by the fact that you've got all these folks who have made major investments in it and want to maintain it.
I forget what Tesla's core competency is either. They want these people to have a good, good experience in their cars. The last thing they want, you know, for the cost of whatever that is, is for people to, you know, have a, a bad review online or whatever that blows up into this big thing. I think we're splitting hairs at that point. And yeah.
Chris, did you have a, another comment? I see your hand is still up. Yes or no?
I do not. I don't see my hands still up. If it is, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then I guess I have a question. I guess I'll be opposed to Scott or to Drew. Which section or which one of the ordinances would have that in there?
Plan Development Ordinance.
So, yes, it's a, condition four of 2024-004.
004? It's condition four?
Yes. So that condition currently, if I can go to that real quick, just talks about the securing of an agreement prior to COW. I mean, obviously, we're here now with that. But I believe the general amendment that would need to be made is just that staff, staff and the applicant come to an agreement regarding the maintenance, proposed maintenance agreement.
If it was, it was condition four in 004?
Yes. And there's language in the resolution, but I believe that does not necessarily need to be modified because it just says to add language regarding the agreement or regarding the dedication of the right of way. So I believe that condition would, would still be able to stand with the, the current direction that, that the council discussed.
So I have a question. Who's going to, where the property line ends until the other parking lot, who's going to plow that? Is that still going to be our responsibility as the city?
We're still doing the plowing and charging them back for that.
I think one of the solutions we discussed was starting with, I believe it was $1,000. That was the, we would pay the city an annual basis, subject to adjustment, obviously. Cost of plowing goes up, but if they're...
It's a fixed $1,000.
Fixed forever?
Yes.
Okay. Well, yeah, for right now. So the, the point being, the city would continue to plow. I think we heard from Public Works with respect to the fact that it didn't make sense for them to drop the plows, go 100 feet or 200 feet and then pick them back up. So we would just pay for the service that the city provides. So the alternative is we would hire somebody to plow it, but, excuse me, lifesaver.
We own a very short swath of that road to the north. It's, it's just the area, like from the Portillo's driveway and over the bridge that goes over that, that marsh portion. And so we're, we'd be sending out a truck to go over, you know, 50 feet. Doesn't make sense.
There's no logical way to separate it, unfortunately, you know, to turn around or anything like that. That's why we kind of just continue through.
This maintenance agreement was at the request of staff to accommodate the, the snowplow trucks that, to Scott's point, have a hard time turning around because of the width of the road. So staff proposed a $1,000 fee for the applicant to pay on an annual basis. And there was, we agreed to it. And we have a maintenance agreement that we sent to Drew that also clarifies that the city has no obligation to repair or maintain the road, other than snowplow.
Wanted to confirm, did the SSA, was it going to cover the detention basin or any of the landscaping or anything else going, getting degraded or just the road?
We had not finalized any of the terms of it. Our, what we were anticipating was the road and the detention primarily.
It's the property owner's obligation to maintain the road. So the only thing that the city has been doing is plowing.
Sam's Club a couple of years ago did do a repainting of, of that roadway as part of parking lot improvements. So the, the property owner has been maintaining it.
So without an SSA, there's three potholes in that stretch of road. How do they determine?
Essentially, if there's deficiencies on the side right now, from the city's perspective, all we can do is code enforcement efforts, ask them to, to repair or replace those conditions, but it would fall on the property owner.
That's correct. But again, there is a recorded document that requires and obligates the applicant to repair and maintain that road. And, and the basin.
And the landscaping.
And, and yes, and the landscaping. Had to think about that one.
I think we'll go through the, the ordinances here and then I will read them off. First one we'll vote on will be ordinance 24, or 2024-003, Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map from General Commercial to Mixed Use. I'll make that motion, that we send that to council with the recommendation. Motion by Wolf, second by Yazi. Roll call, please.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ure.
Aye.
Seron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
13.
That one passed. We'll move on then to item B, ordinance...
Vocal singer.
Aye.
That's 13.
One pass. We'll move on then to item B, ordinance 2024-004, amendment to the zoning map, general commercial to mixed use, mixed use zoning district with planned development overlay district and removing condition number four.
Second.
I make one objection. We, I did during the presentation mention we'll have to modify the sign or the, the conditions of, or excuse me, the zoning modifications to allow the taller sign. If you're okay with that, we can make that change out of the, the council review.
The, the taller sign is also in this one?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll add that as to my modification to what is listed in the ordinance currently.
And, and then the other item in that ordinance was with condition two, I believe they wanted a slight modification to, or language to say an affidavit about the lease that Mr. Vidovic indicated that he would, he could provide. So we would, we would need to, we can modify ahead of council based on that, that item two.
That there will be an affidavit stating Tesla is the dealer that's going in there?
Yes, we signed this.
Right, okay.
Signed this.
And you're okay with my changes to it for a second?
So one, one other thing, on condition number four, we don't specify the special service area, but the condition does call for the maintenance agreement, which we do not have in place right now with a thousand dollars. So we probably should just keep that condition in there, but just have the direction that we would not have.
There would not be an SSA listed in that condition then?
Correct, correct. The maintenance would be just the plowing.
The plow, the plowing maintenance would then become an item number four.
Correct, right.
Sorry to do this to you for the maintenance. So that's what we'll leave it at. So the, the, the sign would be a change. There will be no mention of the SSA in item four, and then the sign changes in condition number two. Correct? That's my motion.
Second.
That's your second. Motion by Wolf, second by Yazi. Roll call please.
Faraza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Seron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
That's 13.
This is, we want a council positive recommendation. We'll then go on to item C, which is ordinance 2024-005, the text amendment for zoning code to allow certain uses as conditional use in the mixed use district.
Second.
And no adjustments. Okay, motion by Wolf, second by Yazi, all, roll call please.
Faraza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Seron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
That's 13.
Thank you. Then would be item D, which is ordinance 2024-007, conditional uses for motor vehicles, sales and leasing, new and used.
Actually, it should be 06 first. The personal property.
Yeah, it's out of order. Yeah, it's out of order. You noticed that? Okay, then we'll, we'll go forward but back up. Ordinance 2024-006, conditional use for indoor personal property storage use.
Second.
One, oh, and one, one modification there, that was, the, the applicant was requesting to, uh, language regarding successors and the signs be added to that particular conditional use, which we were.
Okay. So add this succession on there. That will be the motion I make.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Yazi. Roll call please.
Faraza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
More details and all of that. So think about it within that context, if there's consensus to either A add regulations or keep the same, and then kind of which ones, if there is a consensus on either new regulations or keeping the same, kind of which direction to take us there. So just keep that in mind as we move through this and as we get into our discussion about this. So a bit of background onto how we got here and kind of where we are right now. So the state authorized video gaming back in 2009. Basically, anywhere with a liquor license would be able to qualify to obtain video gaming. Past city councils have taken a couple of votes on video gaming prior to today's discussion. Originally, the council on a 10-4 vote was against it. That was in 2009. It came back up in 2014, and again, the council voted six to eight to prohibit video gaming in the town. Then in 2017, ordinance 1711 allowed video gaming, and that is more or less what our current regulations are. And that was a 12-nothing vote. There was a slight modification on a 10-nothing vote. Then, the most recent actual change that got done was a slight raising in fees from 1,000 to 1,500 for liquor license classes tied to the gaming thing, I believe. And then, most recently in 2020 via ordinance 2043, that would have limited the number of sites to eight, and that failed on a six to seven vote. So unsurprisingly, there's been some back and forth with prior city councils as well on this. So what we look to is what are some of our neighbors doing with regard to regulations? We considered the following towns: Aurora, St. Charles, South Elgin, North Aurora, West Chicago, Elgin, and Bartlett. That kind of gives us a broad swath of our neighbors, similar-sized communities, and other things like that. So I'm going to walk you through kind of how they approach video gaming, and it generally falls into four broad categories in the way they choose to regulate it. So first things first, the reason why we did some of this research in the first place is because the city of Aurora had placed in some additional restrictions on video gaming relatively recently. Some of those restrictions include that you can only have them at full-service restaurants, that their waiting period is 120 days, ours is one year. They place a cap on the number of terminals at 200. And then, because the city of Aurora has a casino, and casino revenues are substantially higher on a per-play basis than a video gaming revenue, they obviously want to protect some of that income coming in via the casino. So they restrict it from locations. You can't have it within the downtown fringe, and they kind of limit their locations last that way to protect their casino revenue. Additionally, they place regulations on how many video gaming establishments can exist in one shopping center. Existing people were grandfathered in, but basically, it is designed to in some ways limit how many are in one location. And that more or less is what Aurora does. I'm really only going to highlight things that are different than ours. Assume that if it's not mentioned, it more or less is the same as our code. St. Charles doesn't have that many regulations across the board on video gaming. They do have one restriction, and that is on advertising. So St. Charles's rules are that there can be no public visible advertising for video gaming within an establishment. So no permanent signage, nothing that directs it that this is a video gaming purpose, as opposed to a restaurant, a bar, or something like that. So they have a decent amount of advertising restrictions. South Elgin, virtually no regulations. They basically have the state minimum, and that is it. North Aurora recently did some major changes to their code. I believe this was back in October. They included some things and specifically defined video gaming parlors, which they included the definition to mean any establishment with the primary purpose as video gaming, and really having only food and beverage as an ancillary purpose. Then, if they do fall into a video gaming parlor by definition, they don't qualify for a video gaming license. Additionally, they have regulations in their code that allow for financial records to be researched if there is a question of, is this business masquerading as a business and mainly a video gaming parlor or something like that. So they have a process within their code to allow for those to be researched and to be looked into. And then, all new applicants that are coming in and seeking a video gaming license have to have an affidavit basically saying that you're not trying to get around these rules, and that you are indeed saying that you're not, by their code definition, a video gaming parlor. They only allow one terminal per 500 square feet of interior gross floor area. So bigger business gets more terminals, smaller business gets fewer terminals. And then, similar to St. Charles, any advertising on or off premises should only reflect the primary purpose of the business and not video gaming. Yeah.
I just wanted to ask, how enforceable is that first part there, especially with looking at financial records and affidavits? Is that, A, really carry force of law, and B...
It does, because it's a privilege to have the license. And so, it's a condition of having the license that you'll allow inspection of your records.
Is that something that city staff feels would be theoretically viable?
Yes. In fact, North Aurora has the exact same city attorney as the city of Batavia.
I was just about to say that. We'll have to check with Mr. Drendel, see if he wrote the ordinance. But no, that's a good point. We are only bringing forward things that are in existing codes from other cities. So our assumption, to that extent, obviously we'll do our own checks, but the assumption is if some of these cities are putting in these restrictions, that likely they've done their research as well. And well, obviously, we do with all things that come before you, make sure that we check with our attorneys and whatnot. So moving on to West Chicago, they have many of the similar elements. They have a definition of video gaming cafe, same thing as what North Aurora calls a parlor. They also have more restrictions on what types of liquor licenses can hold those. So they really only have restaurants, golf courses, and then beer and wine-only sales. So those are additional restrictions. They also include language specifically calling out that this is a privilege, not a property right when you buy a property or seek to do something, and that it does not transfer when you sell the property. So, you know, one business goes out of business, that license doesn't follow the new business into the property. Elgin, they also require a distributor's license. So if you're not super familiar with how it works, there's terminal operators who, you know, do all the over-the-top work to basically make it so a business doesn't have to really do all that much to bring in that revenue. They charge them a license fee as well, and that really just appears to be a revenue stream, from what I could tell. Elgin also has similar provisions that are prohibiting, you know, the primary use of the facility being for video gaming, and that it has to be an accessory use, not the primary use. And they use terms within their zoning code to define primary versus secondary use. Bartlett also has minimal regulations. They had something grandfathered in, which was a push tax. Basically, when you play, it's a one-cent tax per machine. We don't even have that option. It was banned by the state. So that's just one thing that, even if it was being considered, we don't have that authority anymore. But communities that had that prior were grandfathered in. So now I want to talk a little bit about some of the data that we looked into. Basically, how many establishments there are per city, and some of the ratios we have within that. So as you can see, we've got all of our populations, the establishments, how many terminals there are, and more or less if each terminal was grouped by how many people are there, or more or less assigned to it, if that makes sense. Batavia would fall in at 2,375 people per terminal in town. That amounts to about 484 persons. So that's per establishment, so that has licensing. And then on a per-terminal basis, it's 484. You can see that kind of falls within where some of the other towns are. Aurora and Elgin obviously have much larger populations, so that skews that potentially. But among St. Charles, Bartlett, South Elgin, North Aurora, West Chicago, you can kind of see we're more or less in line with where they're at. And so it's just kind of some data there to help you understand that as well. And then, last... Yeah, and then there was an extensive study done by ProPublica that I just did want to mention that kind of talks about some of the pitfalls in the state's approach to video gaming. Just think, obviously, to consider. Generally speaking, we tend to see a proliferation of these devices in lower-income communities. It tends to be that as the income levels in a community decrease, there tends to be an upwards flow of how many gaming establishments move in. Additionally, across the board, even in towns that may be saturated with these devices, it generally doesn't account for more than 3% of local revenues. But I do want to call out that that still is a substantial portion. So we brought in $168,922 in 2023. That includes licensing revenue. That accounted for half a percent of the general fund revenue. It's still a revenue stream that is greater than some other things. I think Peggy mentioned things like permit revenues, fees from other things. So it is a substantial chunk of that kind of revenue stream. Additionally, researchers do say that gambling revenues are heavily subject to economic trends, so that, you know, when the economy's very good, people have more disposable income, they may be more prone to spending it on video gaming, as opposed to times are tight, those revenues tend to go down. And we see that with casinos as well as, you know, video gaming and that whole thing. So really, there's four domains I want you to consider if there is a consensus on regulations. It really falls into four categories. We have a location restriction, limiting licenses, advertising restrictions, and primary purpose via financial records. So I'll talk about location restriction, one. First and foremost, this all has to be as a condition of licensure. So to be clear, all of these regulations would be applied on the licensure side. So as a condition of licensure, any licensee must be in a minimum distance from another licensee. Aurora has one. Aurora has this type of regulation, and there's a set at half a mile. They also prohibit new video gaming in their downtown area. We could consider, if that was something council is interested in, considering based on zoning districts or other things, it would ostensibly allow existing folks to be grandfathered in, but prohibit additional gaming in that area. There's also the option to just limit the number of licenses that the city gives out at any given time. This would basically mean that until an existing establishment gets off of the video gaming, then no new licenses are given once we hit that cap. And that's something that would be up to council as to what that cap is, whether it's on establishment, licensing, or the number of terminals, whatever that may be, and that's ultimately a council-level decision. Next is advertising restrictions. There's a number of towns that have this. Basically, if you're a restaurant that serves food, your advertising should be food, not, we do video gaming and, oh, you can also get a pizza or something. That's what their ordinances and restrictions are written as, and that's another thing council can consider. And then lastly, this is some issue that has come up in discussions from city councils that, you know, is this an ancillary purpose, or is it the primary purpose, or something like that? North Aurora does allow, or does require, financial records, or at least an affidavit to be sure that you are doing what you say you're going to be doing, and we can check to make sure that's the case. That's something that the city could consider as well. Ultimately, if we find out someone's violating it, it depends on the level of severity and, you know, all those things. And hopefully, that doesn't happen, but there are mechanisms in place should someone lie on an official thing. So those are really the gist of our options that you may want to consider. And really, it's up to you all as to which direction you want staff to take. No action, some action, which one seemed most appropriate to you all. And I think it might be helpful, like kind of when there's a, like an idea of a consensus, do a quick straw poll or something like that. So we kind of know where to work and do some more research, and if we do need to draft an ordinance or something.
I'll go this way, because I was looking that way first. Go ahead.
Problems tonight. Among the options you list, another one I saw that North Aurora is also doing is limit it based on, you know, interior floor space, which I think would, I would argue effectively do what this is doing of saying, if you're presumably renting a large space to be at more machines, it seems like it'd be a strange choice to have all that space, have all the machines in one corner, and not really have any other use of that business. I feel like it would accomplish much of the requirements of the affidavit and financial requirements without being necessarily so invasive. Basically, have a way to limit machines according to the space that's being used, and in that process, more gently nudge people towards not having this be the primary use, and instead just be secondary to the establishment, if that makes sense.
So you would say the one terminal per 500 square feet?
Or something like that, yeah. I think that's just a lighter way, sort of way to accomplish that goal, although it does still leave open potential corner cases.
Probably, I can think of three businesses off the top of my head that probably would need to have terminals removed for that purpose, if we were to implement that kind of a rule.
I think most know my opinion on this, but I'll try and be brief. Yeah, I've never liked them in town. I've always thought, I guess, that it's kind of cheap in the town. It takes us from the idyllic Bedford Falls to Pottersville, in my opinion, or puts us down that path. However, I've also said I will not vote on anything that would remove anything from any existing business. I'm not going to take away revenue. So anything that we would do, I would say, well, there may be signage. I would say I would grandfather, because my ultimate proposal would be that we eliminate it and don't allow anymore. However, the 11 establishments now that we have would be able to keep those while they still exist. So there'd be no impact to city revenue. There'd be no impact to those businesses. They'd be able to continue to operate as normal. And everybody then is happy, because then everybody gets to keep making the money that they make. I'm glad you put that article up there about in lower income. The data that you sent later in the day proves it, that the proliferation of the usage of them is in the lower-income neighborhoods in Batavia. Number one being Speedway, number two being Rosati's Pizza, number three is Crosstown. There is a correlation. There's a reason now, and I know it's been spoken, hey, there's all kinds of video gaming that's available, or gambling that's available online now, in sports betting. There's a reason, as you drive down the highway now, there is a lot more signs that say, have a gambling problem, call 1-800-whatever-that-number-is. It's an addiction. And these, and Dan Chans is not here to say it, but he said it before, they're designed to draw you in, just like TikTok and others are designed to get you scrolling all day long. And then all of a sudden, you realize, holy cow, it's an hour later, what have I done with my time? And that's what happens with the video gaming for those that have an addiction. So that's why principally don't want them in our town. I just don't think it's fair to our residents to say, hey, we want to grab another $170,000 from you guys a year because of your addiction. And I know, yes, that could be said about alcohol and cigarettes, et cetera. But there's not a lot of billboards out there right now that are saying, hey, have a drinking problem, go here. Have a smoking problem, go here. They don't exist. Those things don't exist the way that it is for gaming. So first proposal will be grandfather whoever's in, get rid of them. And then, if that is a no-go, because we can't get enough votes, I would definitely say eliminate all the signage, because that takes us back, at least on the surface, we look idyllic and don't have the signage that's really kind of irritated me as well.
So let's maybe talk about that signage point specifically, and then we can see where the room is on that, or in general.
We have opinions.
Okay, Sarah, go ahead.
I don't know who's...
We were pointing for... We were waiting to be called on.
I thought that was a vote, that's why.
No.
Sarah, go ahead.
I support limiting or eliminating the advertising options, too. I didn't realize that other towns did that. I love that idea. I think that is something that we can do, you know, while still keeping other things for existing business owners intact. Go ahead, Leah.
Actually, before reading through your memo, Max, I actually was, you know, thinking about this a lot this week, and was, to Mark's point, like, thinking about what, the perception of what we want Batavia to be. And when I drive through towns that have video game lights in all the windows, I don't actually see that as a thriving downtown. I see that as a floundering downtown district that is needing video gaming to survive. And that's not Batavia, as you said. Like, it is revenue, but it's a very small, you know, revenue stream for Batavia. And that's not the perception I want for our town. I don't want it to be that we need gambling to be a thriving downtown. So if this is something we decide we want to keep, whether we cap or limit how many gamings are in each business, I am a very large proponent of limiting signage. And that was something that I actually was pondering before I read through your memo, as well as starting this off with, was that that would be something I would be supportive of. In our downtown area, maybe Randall Road, Kirk Road, we do something different. But maybe within our downtown business district, we have one set of regulation, and then Randall Road, Kirk, something different, so.
Yeah, I would fully support, you know, you all know where I stand on this, but the advertising, I think, exactly what said, you know, when you go through a town, you know, go through St. Charles, you don't see that. They have more machines than we do. So, you know, I don't think it would hinder. Is that relying on that? And I'm with you, Mark. I don't want to take anything away, but it's about, I've said all along, I don't want that image for Batavia. And I think that's one measure we can take that I think is not, you know, taken away from anyone.
And just to clarify, what was suggested was to say, not in the downtown, but so the downtown mixed-use district, no advertising of video gaming, but then keep the same regulations in place outside of the downtown mixed-use district? Or do you want to eliminate it altogether?
I think you have to be careful about making a distinction between the different commercial districts. Either have to say no or allow it.
A lot of the regulations live explicitly outside of the zoning code. They're all tied to a licensure.
Right, licensure.
And so I'm not sure if that, like you said, that might create an issue. Kind of, if that's something council really wants us to look into, we can. But it sounds like there is, to some extent, a consensus on restricting the advertising. And kind of the, so do we want to do like a quick, like...
Who wants the advertising?
I think that'd be an easy thing to say. Is there anybody who still supports the advertising?
Emmy?
I know you don't. I'm just giving you your chance to speak about this.
Sure, thank you. And I just wanted to back up, because I think the way Mark started it was, you know, there are those of us that would like to see the cap, and the, you know, as those close, their licenses go away. And then, the way you posed the advertisements was kind of like a plan B if that didn't pass. I'm also okay with it in conjunction, but I just also wanted to say that I'd like to know if there is consensus around that limit, capping it where it's at now, and slowly eliminating them as they close.
Want to discuss or do a straw poll on support in favor of that?
We could do it that way, but I would recommend we had consensus on the advertising. Why don't we nail that down right now?
I heard that we did.
Right, right.
The advertising, so we just wanted to move on to the other.
No separation of downtown.
Any districts or anything.
And everything that we discuss is obviously going to come back to you.
Right, right, right.
So basically, this will give staff direction. We can write some ordinances, do some additional research, find language that aligns with what you're directing us. So that's...
Yeah, we'll have to talk about the signage, whether we do incorporate in the zoning code, or whether we do that in the video gaming code. We get into some of that constitutional issues, some of the signage things. So, you know, it might be best to put it in the zoning code, which we may have to go to the planning commission. But we can review that and see how that would best work.
The outcome that we want is the no advertising.
Right.
We'll figure out the mechanics of how to do it.
No neon signs flashing as you drive through past them, right?
Right. I mean, I think there's one sign that I've seen.
So then, should we move on to the capping and eventually eliminating question?
Max, can I just ask why Geneva wasn't included?
Geneva does not have it, I believe. Yeah. I do not believe they have video gaming. I, yeah, I don't think so.
And I think they discussed it. Did they ever even bring it up for discussion?
I think they have.
Yeah, they rejected it.
They rejected it. That's right. Rejected it?
Cap and keep, or cap then eliminate?
This could be a good discussion, because I, in theory, I want to cap it, eliminate it. But then every time somebody comes here, I'm like, ah.
If it takes that discussion away so that you don't have to say no to people, we'll say no to people.
Well, I understand. It's not because I'm too weak to say no to people.
No, no, no. It is hard to say no when somebody is excited about bringing their business to our town, and they're asking for it.
And there's, there are things that I'm wavering on. For example, you know, the one town, I don't remember, eliminate. It's a privilege not to, so if you sell the business, it doesn't come with it. But that's a huge valuation issue, and there's a lot of things that go along with that, that, you know, I got to think through more. So I'm waffling. I would like a limit. I just don't know where the number would be. So that could take a while.
Yeah, I would just, I mean, I'm in favor of no cafes, no advertising. We went over that. But I, you know, I think it does get to me to be a little anti-business when we, because there are so many communities around us. Okay, we have one in Geneva that's, you know, decided against it. But, and trust me, along with the advertising, along with everything Alderman, you already said, in terms of addiction and things like that, I'm very familiar. And, you know, unfortunately, I just don't see that as our place. I don't see our, you know, we're not here, I'm not here to tell people. Otherwise, we would be sitting here, and I know we've brought it up, you know, about the other, you know, vices of the world. But if we really cared about people's health and things like that, we'd be having very serious conversations around those things and not gambling. So to put on that, what I will call a facade, I don't, I just, as a body, I don't think that that is, it's not our place. So in terms of going back to the state law that was, you know, approved, and then for us to determine what we're going to do in town, I think we kind of already made our bet a little bit. We have 11 businesses here with this that is known throughout the area. It's now, whether it's a draw or not is one thing. But if we take it away, it's, in my opinion, definitely a drawback for a number of businesses. It is a very good supplemental income for these businesses. So, I mean, it's just a fact of what it is. And when you look at the numbers, per capita, we have quite a few players in this town. So, you know, it's one of these things where I'm not a fan of the look, so to speak, but for us to, like, determine that for people, I think that's up to people to decide for themselves. If they want to go into an establishment that has gaming, great. If an establishment wants to have gaming, great. Now, along with that, I think we, you know, I think we have in place today a cap on a number of machines in each establishment, right?
Five.
Yeah, five. So, you know, things like that, common sense stuff, I'm absolutely in favor of talking about and putting some parameters around. But the grandfather thing scares me as well, right? It's like, you know, I've never been a fan of some of those grandfather things, because as time goes on, you know, that grandfather period gets longer and longer and longer, and people get frustrated of, you know, the new businesses coming in, so to speak, whatever it might be. So then we start making exceptions and this, that, and the other. So, you know, I think we put some common sense ordinances around attempting to keep everything as tightened in, and not as many machines as possible, but to, you know, and I guess, you know, at a certain point, we could limit the number of establishments at, you know, I don't know if it's 30, or whatever matches our town from a nice-size perspective. But to say, you know, only 10, or only 15 businesses could have it, or something like that, I mean, I'd have to mull over that a little bit. But that, to me, just, it gets too close to, you know, the anti-business side of me. So that's my two cents.
I want to request clarification, Max. On the slide where you present... On the slide where you present the numbers, yeah, this one, when it says persons per terminal, that is a division from the total population, not users, right?
Yeah, it's just basically on a per capita basis. It's not, you know, how many people.
I read it that way at first, too. I wanted to make sure that was understood.
No worries, yeah.
Do we have any rough idea of like, what percentage of our population plays these machines?
We wouldn't have that.
I figured.
We had the demographics of who's playing either.
We don't have that.
So there's no indication that at Speedway, it's the people at the housing. It could be the truckers that are stopping and playing.
Or even crosstown, how many people are from outside the city.
Those all have CCTV systems on for the record. So they could get the info if we want.
I'd rather not go that route. That's a little invasive.
All right, so back on track. So we've got consensus on advertising. I think the next question is on number of, like, whether or not a cap or something like that. Is that kind of where folks want to take this?
Why don't we do a straw poll on who supports capping it at the number of licenses that we have at this point? And we've got one person who's absent tonight, who I think I know where that, so it's about half and half split there.
Actually, I didn't, I wanted to talk on that specifically. We started talking about that cap, but I didn't get a chance on that. I support a cap in place, you know how I feel, but, you know, just consider this, and currently the code is, or the rules stipulate that it's not transferable, correct?
It is transferable if you open up the exact same type of business within one year.
Except for the conditional use is not transferable. If it's a new one that has a conditional use, those have to go through the process again.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, if it was established prior to it becoming a conditional use, then it is not transferable.
So, that's probably, what do we have, or half our conditional use, if that?
I would say more like one-third, because we really haven't had a proliferation of these things. We had like eight people who got them in the first couple of years, and then they just kind of, the other three, it's people who came and went, and we had, you know, two or three of this unusual.
So, one point I would, would add to that, you know, if we did put a cap in place, we wouldn't have to keep having this conversation. Because I've been at the council, and this comes up, you know, we have spent a lot of time talking about that. Without doing harm to anyone, I agree with that, Mark. So that's something to consider, that, you know, if we did decide to have a cap somewhere, that would, we would not be in this position to have to say no, even though you can sound like me sometimes.
So right now, we ask the question of a cap at the current license holders. If we were to say that the cap was somewhere higher than that, let's say we're at 11 today and we use a number like 20 licenses, is that something, who would be in favor of us capping it at 20 licenses?
I think the thing that we have to take into consideration, and Alan even said this when this first came up, we have nobody in the audience from the residents that have complained about this. I have not received an email from residents regarding this. This, this is something where we are putting our own biases into a decision, and we have to take a look at our biases and decide what is best for our community. It is not drawing people away, it's not drawing businesses away, but it's helping businesses come and establish themselves. We're not getting the Chili's coming in and looking for this, we're getting Mom and Pops, people that are small businesses coming in, asking for that assistance to just get them through the cost of construction. And so when we come here and make decisions, we have to make these decisions for what is right for the community, and we have to put aside our biases.
Chris, go ahead.
His hand went.
Nick, next.
I was just going to say.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't have my mute on.
Lost your turn.
I'm back.
Go ahead.
Me or Alderman's wrong?
No, go ahead, Chris.
Chris, go ahead.
Okay. So, I believe that Alderman's very eloquent in exactly what she said, because that's what I wanted to say, but she said it better than me. I've received zero. I've been in this community since 1976, other than a couple of years off and on when I was at school or living downtown. I've never received a single complaint from a single person about video gaming in this town. Not a single person, ever. I've heard it a lot since I've joined city council. That's the first I've ever heard it, though. And I received, I can't tell you how many unpleasant phone calls and emails about putting a 10-cent fee on plastic bags. It was crazy. Or about the contract with Groot, the amount of phone calls and emails I received. Zero emails, zero phone calls regarding this topic, the amount of time we spend on it. And everybody knows my position on this. I am completely, I think our regulations are just fine. I think if we follow the state, we're doing okay. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Nick?
I was just going to kind of broaden, I probably shouldn't broaden the conversation. I would agree with that we're in a good spot right now, but when we talk about capping, I think I'd be more open to not necessarily capping establishments, but capping either the number of units or, better yet, the number of units per square foot in a, in a place. So, you know, places don't come in like a JT's porch, which I'm a big fan of, they should have gotten two for that size place. You know, to put limits in that regard, I would be more for, but that opens up another can of worms.
That as well, and just wanted to make a comment, too, about the level of complaints. I've been, I've been the recipient of a lot of complaints about certain establishments, and luckily they are no longer in business, but my fear has only, has always been that these gaming terminals are artificially keeping alive businesses that don't deliver on product or service or ambiance, they're just being kept alive by their video games. And then we're losing in our market here and competitive with other towns on what's bringing people in to dine and to gather with friends because they can't find a place that has really great food, service, and vibe. And so I'm not saying that that's true of any businesses that are in place right now, but it has been true in the past. The complaints are strong and real and they were scary at times, so that's always been my fear. The ones that we have now continue to let them go. I really like that idea of limiting per square foot, that in combination with the advertisements, I think would go a long way. I don't, I don't think it's just my own personal bias, I don't, I don't have a personal bias against gaming. I lived in Las Vegas for six years, I saw a lot of it, but also didn't have a lot of very cool places to go because they didn't need to be cool, they just had video games everywhere, so.
About if what staff does is bring back an ordinance with some alternative changes in it, right? And so we didn't seem to have majority support for limiting the amount of establishments, but let's, let's put that in there anyway for, you know, us to have more discussion and thought about to see if we can work something out in that regard. But I also hear some support for the number of machines per square foot that are inside. So could we bring back an ordinance that, or an amendment to the ordinance that has the three things in it, advertising, number of licenses, and terminals per square footage?
A quick straw poll on terminals per square foot, or?
Sounds like people, there's quite a bit of support around the horn for it, so.
I'm completely against that. I think we should do a straw poll on that, so everybody can say what they need to say on that. Sorry for, I raised my hand, but then I wanted to make sure we didn't just pass over this. I don't know why we're not doing straw polls on that. I don't hear majority.
Oh, okay, we can do a straw poll, and it's because you don't have the video, Chris, I'm sorry. We've got the advantage of seeing, nodding heads around the dais, and you, and you don't. So let's go ahead and do a straw poll if, for, if you're in favor of the, limiting the number of terminals per square foot. One, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Worth more discussion, right?
Oh, yeah. No, we're, this is just then.
I'm tired of discussing this. This is like the 12th conversation since I've been on council. Anytime somebody new comes on, it's being asked to be talked about again.
And I guess I'll state my, my feeling on this is, I don't feel we have a problem in this town with this.
Oh, I know, but.
I'm all for trying to limit the, you know, the visible signs of it, but we don't have a problem with it. We don't have a proliferation of it, we don't have people coming in because a wear ordinance is written now. You can't get a license and you can't set up, you know, in a strip mall and have a cooler in the corner with beer and say, I have a liquor license to sell that beer, so now I can have the terminals. That's not how this has worked in this community.
I meant to add to the end of my comment, too, about like, the artificially keeping a business alive was that I really liked the affidavit, the financial inspection option being, because we did, it seems like there's a lot of loopholes, not a lot of loopholes, but we have seen businesses come in that didn't have to be open for a year, that openly admitted that if they don't have gaming, their business model doesn't work, which is, in my mind, essentially a video gaming cafe. So I think we need something tighter because we're, we're going against what our initial intent was in a couple places.
And I, I have a question. Seeing that North Aurora and West Chicago have defined gaming parlor, could overflow exist in one of those towns under their regulations?
I, I don't know.
It doesn't sound like it.
I don't think.
So, I just, I bring that up because.
Would allow it.
The mayor has talked about this, you know, in the past, about the situation in Aurora, right there at, was it Butterfield?
What really helps us is our one-year. North Aurora doesn't have a one-year waiting period of time, and I really can't see someone signing a lease, paying rent for a full year on an empty establishment, and then bringing in a bucket of beer.
But I guess this goes to, I don't think overflow would be allowed in North Aurora or West Chicago under their current code.
They also don't have Riverside in those towns.
That's, that's two different businesses.
Respectfully, Tony, I actually went to the overflow up in South Elgin for a private party. Nobody was sitting at the machines playing until I sat down and threw in a 20. Were there to drink and to eat, and it was food that was catered from Riverside, and that's what people were there for. Their primary business is the bar, their primary business is a bar and to serve parties.
I don't believe they would be allowed in those towns under those regulations.
They're in South Elgin.
Well, that's not what we're here to decide, Tony.
No, well, it was brought up here, whether we want to include these kind of regulations in our town, that's exactly what our conversation is here.
And that's why I'm not for those, because I can see, I've been out there, I've experienced what the establishments are. And I threw my money in there.
I don't want to create too much of a back and forth on, on some of this stuff, but I have talked to people that do not like the establishments, they don't, they, Riverside tends to get the, tends to get the, they get the free pass because they've got good food, so people go to Riverside and kind of, you know, look the other way, but then they won't go to the other bars in town that have the gaming because they don't want to be around that, they, it's just not what they like. And I've had several conversations, so some of us get complaints about some things, some don't. I mean, that's just, that's been the nature of it in the time I've been on council, and I'm surprised sometimes of the, the lack of comments that I get from the community sometimes. And then, Chris, your, your comment, the state, we are following, Geneva's following the state's law as well because they're given, the cities are given the right to whether or not they want to allow it. So we just took that extra step and said, sure, we want the money. And that's the thing that, I, I gamble. I, when I go to Vegas, I gamble. Chance it was trying to call me out on it. I don't have a problem with gambling, I'm trying to protect those that, that may. And yeah, sure, I guess they can go to a different place, but maybe they don't if they have to get in a car and drive somewhere, rather than walking two or three blocks to get somewhere. That's kind of what I'm trying to help our citizens on any way I can, little things like that, so I'll leave it at that.
Look hard to drive somewhere else.
So what, what is our end game here tonight with this discussion? Do we want to consider the changes that we've, because we're really at an impasse. You know, you've got about seven of you who would like to see video gaming go away and seven of you who don't, and.
I would propose that the things that we've agreed on are things, if we want to change our ordinance, or we want to change the license, let's limit the advertising, and then we're going to have to have a vote on whether we want to do square footage limitations for the terminals or a cap. Those are the two things we have to vote on. The other one I think we're pretty much okayed with is the advertising change. Scott?
One other thing I would note is that, you know, you kind of took a straw poll on whether you'd cap it at 11. You kind of did it on 20, but we didn't do something in between. So I don't know if maybe 20 is way too many, maybe the number is 13, I don't know what, you know, but I just throw that out there.
I mean, if we really want to do this and we want to compromise and barter about this, why don't we pick the middle and say 15? And then, you know, we have 15, if all of a sudden we got 20 people that want to come in and open up a business and ask for that, then the council can decide if they want to change it.
Is it five that's maximum?
Five terminals per, per business.
And Chris has his hand up.
Chris, go ahead.
So, I'm, I'm tired of this conversation, I'm sorry, I'm done with this stuff. I had many more things to say, but I'm not there, I don't feel I'm productive, so. Sorry, I'm just taking my hand out.
We, I mean, it seemed, we had the votes for the square footage. Is that in conjunction with a cap?
It'll all be cafeteria style to take a look at an amendment to the ordinance, and we can vote on each one of those changes.
And the other thing we would have to do if we do limit it, terminals per square foot, we also have to think about, do we grandfather in the ones that would not fit into that box after we change that? So that would be part of that discussion.
Yeah.
I just want to make a comment that, you know, we get the privilege on city council to talk about these subjects, back and forth, and make decisions for our community. And honestly, if we're not hearing from the community, it probably means we're doing something right. Like, when we hear from them is when we've really messed something up, or, or it impacts them a lot, like the Groot one did, and we all know that, our hands were a little bit tied on that. But this is why we're here, is to go back and forth and have these really, these intense discussions for our community, that they can be at home right now, you know, having a beer and watching TV. So that's, but that's what we signed up for, and it's, it's a privilege, so to not be like, and yes, we have discussed this a lot, and it would be really nice to, like, kind of, it would be kind of nice to like, get a final ordinance and move on from this discussion, but.
It's more than how many establishments we have.
You guys weren't around for chickens, I'll just tell you that. For the amount of things, the amount of people that got chicken permits, and the amount of time we listened to people, and the amount of time we talked about it, was absolutely insane.
I mean, if you guys, I'll, I'll be.
Okay, we got to get, we got to get back on track here. Let's not give you one more.
Related to the topic of community feedback, though, I would argue that in this case, the people who are most affected aren't going to say anything about it because they, you know, potentially are addicted to it, and they're not going to want to see it necessarily go away immediately. But it still has a negative impact on not only their lives, but our town, it's, it creates.
Certainly, it could be discretionary money for them.
It could be, that's visibly true.
I spent my $100, it's gone, so I can't go and throw it in.
It's one of those problems that, what I'm suggesting is, we might not hear about it directly, but has a lot of indirect effects that you won't get just through community feedback. In addition to what Mark suggested, I've talked to a lot of people about this, there's generally a relatively mid to negative view of it, maybe not enough to rise to complaint, but just generally a feeling of, is this really what we want for our town? That's another reason we might not be hearing any feedback. That's another reason we might not be, be hearing any feedback, because it's, it's like a dull ache. It's not enough to like, draw a comment, but it's always there. It's one of those things that, it's not, I don't know if it's necessarily a positive for our town, but it's, hasn't risen to the level of direct comment yet, so it's just, it's a limitation of community feedback.
Do they even know until you bring it up that it's there? Because you don't see it, you don't see it walking down the streets and driving by.
I know a lot of people who, much like Mark suggested, avoid a lot of locations in our town, because honestly, the gaming brings down the vibe for them.
I would love to get a phone call from these people, then.
Serious question, because I don't know one. Where, if we're driving down, downtown, where can you see machines, blinky lights, all that going on?
There's only, there's three signs, there's three signs downtown, none of them flash. Well, Bulldog one isn't flash. There's, there's a Bulldog sign, there's a sign above, a Wilson Street tavern, I know, it isn't flash, though. It doesn't blink. And then Rosati's has one about that big. Those are the only three downtown. Crosstown has one in the corner behind the Rooster, that, I live right, right next to it, didn't even know it was there, because the Rooster literally blocks it, and that one actually is animated.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. There's a sign out on the road by Wilson Street, too, that's always put out there that has jackpot information on it, that's very prevalent right in.
That sign that says, what do they have for their happy hour?
In the interest of time, since we already decided to limit the advertising, can we move on from that?
I wish. I sure wish.
I don't, I think staff will draft some stuff, we'll come back to you, um, and expect this on a future call. We'll bring them as, we'll figure out the best way to put them all together, so you can kind of vote separately on them, and.
Put the over-under on each one.
Sorry.
And also, I just want to point out, since this is, since this is going out and recorded for the public, if anyone in Ward 1 who'd like to comment about this to me, I would invite emails, please, so that I can have some input, if anybody cares about it, one way or the other, or has any feelings at all, please reach out to your alderman, not only me, but everybody here on council.
We'll come back with those three.
We'll come back with those three.
I get feedback. Okay, we'll end that one, and we'll move on to item number 10, which is project status.
The only thing that I would like to, um, bring up under project status is that we recently sent out a letter to our liquor license holding establishments, um, reminding them of some of the rules that are in our code that, uh, seem to, you know, we'd have kind of fallen off on, um, compliance with, and one of those was, we have a prohibition against happy hour. Well, that really shocked quite a lot of people. I even got some questions from members of City Council and, um, our Main Street organization. Is that something that you would like to see changed? Because happy hours used to be, for a period of time, prohibited by the State of Illinois, but then they decided to repeal that prohibition after all of the blowback that they got, and they put some restrictions in place. Could only be for four hours at a time, couldn't be from 10:00 PM until closing, can only have them for 15 hours per week. Is that something that you would like me to bring back to you as amendment to the liquor code? For you guys to consider and decide? Yes.
Hello, this is Chris, and I have heard these same complaints from some other business owners, and I do think that, um, again, with my theme of following the State of Illinois, and as long as we're doing what their regulations say, I think that we should match them as well. So, I believe that it is a topic that should be addressed where we get rid of that particular restriction, since it's no longer a restriction from Illinois, and it would seem the reason why we put that restriction in place, because Illinois said we had.
I think so. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I was asked that question, and it took me about 20 minutes to find it on the website, and realize that it was actually there, and then send it to somebody that had asked me that question, so. Yeah, I don't remember what the number, find it, because I did send them the link to it so that they could see it, because they were asking about that.
Got to be 334.
I think it's 34444.
Okay.
Because I looked it up when I got it. Next question.
We will then move on to others. Does anybody have any others?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Dustin, um, who organize, is organizing a series of movie nights about different community topics, and the first one was last night at the library, and I almost slipped in the parking lot on the way home, but I was still really glad that I attended, and just wanted to encourage, I, I don't think we could all probably be there at the same time due to Open Meetings Act, but, um, he's holding, he's holding these community conversations and making space to like, learn about urban planning and, and land use management and transportation issues, and I just think that is really cool. And so, if you see it posted, maybe share it, try to attend one, we'll try to go in four at a time, but, um, it was a really cool video last night, and it was a cool discussion, and it's just really cool to see people from our town learning about these topics, becoming engaged, and then hopefully someday showing up and telling us about it a little bit more.
Send the information out, so that if we want to distribute it, people can do that or attend, so that way.
For the next event, when that gets organized, I can do that. I was just going to mention that today Fermilab has formally reopened Wilson Hall to, um, everybody who can access the site, so there's a little bit of a shindig there, the mayor was there, it was, if folks want to visit it, I thought I'd just mention that that's available now.
Chris, go ahead.
Go ahead. The ordinance is 3-3-36.
All right.
Right, then, we will need a motion to go into executive session for setting the price of land for sale. Motion by Ure. Second by Malay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.